At this time, we'll call our work session February twenty second two thousand twenty-two work session to order. Jamie, could you please read the sunshine statement?
Be advised that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the sunshine law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Burlington County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jenny?
Here.
Ms. Pareo?
Yeah.
Mr. Lion?
Here.
Mr. Borough?
Here. This time we'll have minutes for approval. I need a motion approving the minutes for the September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-one action work session and procession meeting.
Motion, Lynn?
I'll second Marlo Smith.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lion?
Abstain.
Mr. Borough?
Yes. The eyes have it. The motion carries and minutes are approved. Next up, we have ordinances on first reading. This is ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash zero two, ordinance establishing various salaries for various employees of township of Delran, county of Burlington, state of New Jersey, and regulating the manner of payment of the same. They get a motion and a second.
Motion, Lynn?
Second, Tom Lyon.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lion?
Hi.
Mr. Borough?
Hi. Guys have it. Motion carries. The ordinance is introduced. Next up, we have resolutions. Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-six, amending resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen, the annual meeting notice. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Virginia.
I'll second Marlo Smith.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lion?
Hi.
Mr. Borough?
Hi. Guys have it. Resolutions adopted. Next up, we have our consent agenda, which includes resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-seven, all the way to the resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-one. Have any objections to the consent agenda, the items within? Seeing no objections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-seven to resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-one. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Lynn?
I'll second Marlo.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lion?
Hi.
Mr. Borough?
Hi. The eyes have it. The resolution consent agenda and the resolutions there are passed. Next up, I am going to walk on before the two motions. Resolution. Jamie, what one is this? Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash fifty-two. This is accepting the mayor's nomination and appointing Eileen K. Fahy to serve as the interim township solicitor.
I make a motion. Marlo Smith.
Second, Tom Lyon.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lion?
Hi.
Mr. Borough?
Hi. The eyes have it. Resolutions adopted. Next up, we have our motions. Motion authorizing the payment of bills, including all purchases made under cooperative purchasing agreement.
So move, Tom Lyon.
Second, Lynn. Go ahead, Virginia.
Virginia. Virginia will have it. Jamie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lion?
Hi.
Mr. Borough?
Hi. The eyes have it. The motion carries. And Jamie, do you want to walk on the motion to authorize the RFP? Is that all you need, the solicitor?
Yes. Yep, we can do that.
At this time, I'll just walk on a motion authorizing Jamie to publish an RFP for the township solicitor spot. We'll give Jamie the authorization to do that, and we will go out to RFP to find a solicitor.
So move, Tom Lyon.
Second, Lynn Jenny.
Jamie, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Smith?
Hi.
Mr. Jenny?
Hi.
Ms. Pareo?
Hi.
Mr. Lion?
Hi.
Mr. Borough?
Hi. The eyes have it. Motion carries. Jamie, we'll get that out some point this week. Awesome. So now we are in our work session portion of the meeting. We have two items. Jimmy, you're in the hot seat, so thank you for joining us. We were worried there for a minute.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was having a little computer problem logging on.
No worries, no worries. So Jim, you're up first with the Army Corps update.
Yes. Well, we circulated in the packet, the draft PMP, and PMP stands for the project management plan. This is for River Drive. A lot, many years ago, we asked the Army Corps to, there's a special program in which the federal government provides money for what they call stream bank stabilization projects. And the governing body about, I think, on two six, two thousand sixteen solicited the Army Corps to be included, to ask, ask Army Corps for Delaware to be included in that project. So they got that request. They studied the area. They did an initial study calling a federal interest determination, and they, they, they did agree that, you know, that it was a federally interested project that they could participate, that the project or the concern, which is the erosion along the, the stream embankment, was something that needed to be addressed and should be addressed, and it met with the eligibility requirements of this program. So now that the federal interest determination process has been completed, they put together what's called Project Development Plan. And basically, it's the next phase of the planning process. It's what I like to call concept development. They're going to bring on a team of different professionals and experts in various fields from engineering, environmental sciences, real estate, you know, everything you can think of that deals with projects like, like this, and develop different concept alternatives to address the problem. Ultimately, I believe it's going to end up being some sort of like armament project where they, they clear out along the stream bank and put back some sort of either like large stone or, or sheet piling or some sort of physical measure to, you know, keep it from rotting further. But they do have to, you know, study all alternatives and, and also the do nothing approach, where if they do nothing, what would happen to the area with, you know, flooding and, and the financial impact that will have? So if they show that we do nothing, cost to, you know, Delran, to, you know, the, the government, federal government, to the region will, will be far worse than, you know, doing a project now to stabilize the embankment. So they have to show that to make sure the project continues to be something that's eligible. So, um, so the report just basically outlines that study, the timeframe and the costs. There is a cost share required for the local sponsor, which is Delran. It's fifty percent of the study cost, and the study cost estimated about four hundred thousand. It's a draft plan right now because the Army Corps did need a little bit more time to finalize those cost estimates, which they felt would be, aren't going to change much, if at all. But so we can, you know, be comfortable that our max cost share requirement is about two hundred thousand. So at this point, for the project to move forward, you, the, the council's going to have to, where the town's going to have to sign into an agreement with the Army Corps and the federal government to, you know, participate in the project and, you know, come, come with the money once it's called upon as the study progresses. So I guess that'd be a consideration for your budget moving forward for this year.
Jim, is there, maybe this is a question for Joe. Can that be capitalized, or does that have to come out of the operation budget, the two hundred?
This could, it all likely would be capitalized very, Tyler. Yes.
So that's, that's a piece of good names.
In the report, you'll note that they, they estimated that'd be about eighteen months, once all the agreements are, would be signed if, you know, if, you know, the, the council does decide move forward with this, it would probably take at least a couple of months just to get the agreements ready to be signed. When we originally sat down with Army Corps about five, six, seven years ago, and they explained this process, they did explain and warn how, how lengthy of a process it is that these programs take somewhere from eight to ten years to, you know, to come to fruition. And then COVID did certainly didn't help. We, we lost, you know, everything went shut down. Nothing really happened. So we're in the middle of that process, you know, it's, you know, luckily that the Army Corps and the feds have, you know, agreed that it's something that's interests them, and it's a concern to them. And, uh, and so this is the middle part to, 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 you know, advance it to a, to a design. The next step, it would be, once the study is done, is to actually do a design on, on the plan of corrective action that is decided on. That will something we want to be talking about, when, once that's ready, there is cost share for that as well. There are other grants, though, that are available to help subsidize or non-federal cost share. And we had some interest in, there would be interest from those, those groups that provide those grants, so we can hopefully offset those costs in the future.
Jim, can you just give a, like a thirty-second high level on, once we get to that point for the cost share at the final stage? Can you just, you said that the state can kick in, the feds can kick in, right? There's a bunch of options we have.
Uh, yeah, hold on my, you're.
You have those off the top of your head?
Yeah. Hold on, I'm sorry. I don't know why I lost my video. Do you still, you still see me?
Yes.
Um, so yeah, uh, the design and construction aspect of the job, there's a thirty-five percent non-federal cost share. Now with that, so, so say it's a million dollar project, you'd be responsible for three hundred fifty thousand. But the NJDEP has a program called the Shoreline Protection Program, which they fund projects like this. We actually solicited, put an application in a while ago to that program to help with this problem. And we were not, we were told that we were, we were on the waiting list, but because they earmarked usually their money for Army Corps-related projects that we were unlikely to be, uh, be selected or funded because we were, we weren't at the time, you know, involved with Army Corps. Now that we're involved with the Army Corps, it looks, we, we're confident that, once we go back to them, we can say, look, we got this project, Army Corps is involved. And, uh, you know, and then they provide seventy-five percent of our, thirty-five percent of cost share. So we do the math. Will be whittled down to whatever seventy-five percent of thirty-five percent.
Good. Is there any, yeah, that makes some sense. So is any, I mean, we don't have an ask from us until we get to budget, right? Till we get to the capital budget. The question is, do we put this in the capital budget, right, Jim?
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
I think, I think the good, the good news for the residents on this one is, you know, looking at the management plan, you know, they've committed people to the project, their actual assignments made and, and milestone dates to be set to prepare the first part of the plan. So it looks like they're serious.
Yes. Yeah, that's for sure. This is, I mean, there's no question, this has been a long process that started way before I was here. But, you know, I think this is, this is the next step. We're glad that we're at this point. We've got to continue, keep going down that road. Ultimately, I know we've talked to residents, Virginia and I have been out a couple of times recently, and, you know, the township could come up with this money ourselves and do a patchwork job, but, you know, unless we get support of all the agencies involved, we're not going to have a solution that actually solves the problem and that lasts long enough to justify the cost. So that's why we're working with the Army Corps, the state. We're doing it the right way. Ultimately, it does take a little bit more time, but I think it'll be for the better in the long run. Virginia?
Uh, yeah, I just want to say, you know, I think we all know how I feel on this, on this issue, my word. We have to protect the infrastructure down there, but more importantly, we have to protect the homes. The residents of Riverside Park have waited a long time, and so have we. And now that the Army Corps of Engineers are the only ones that are capable of doing a project of this sort, um, that are willing to do it. So I just think we have to do whatever it takes to make it happen.
Agreed, agreed. Well said, Virginia.
Council President, I'd just like to echo Virginia's response. You know, I was here when we first reached out to the Army Corps, and it was, there were a lot of people involved, and I thanked them. And we knew that it was a long haul, and I'd just like to, to mention, Jim has been diligent about doing that. I know that Virginia talks to Jim all the time to make sure he's on it, and he's been on it. And, you know, to get them involved, I know that we did a, a letter of interest, I believe it was two thousand sixteen. Jim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you know, that said that we would be interested if they would be interested. So I encourage counsel to look at this, and I will talk with Joe Bellina and include it in the budget. You can decide what you want to do with that, going from there.
Thanks, sir.
Awesome. I agree. So let's, you guys, any other questions from, questions or comments from council?
Jim, is, can I, can I just ask one more thing? Jim, is there anything we need to do by way of any kind of a commitment letter, or, yeah, we're going to do this, or we have to wait until it's actually in the budget?
Well, you, you have to, you have to enter into agreement with the, with the Army Corps. So there is a draft agreement that will be circulated. They gave us a, a sample copy of one already, but it wasn't customized yet for this project. It's your routine, you know, cost share agreement where, you know, they say, you know, you're, you're going to do X, Y, Z, and you're going to pay this, and we're going to pay that. So signing that agreement will kick off the next phase. In order to sign that agreement, though, you're, you're committing to two hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, that just has to, so you would think that, yeah, you need the budget for in order to sign that agreement.
Okay. Just trying to get the, the, the next step as, as we go. So, but we can do those, we can look at them simultaneously. We don't, we can't sign the agreement until the council decides to spend the money. Correct?
Yes.
Making sure. Cool. Great. Okay. So Mayor, you're at that in the capital portion of the budget presented to us, and we'll go from there.
Yep, absolutely.
Awesome. Well, with that, we'll go to our next item. Jim, you're still on the hot seat. We have the two thousand twenty-two road program discussion.
So, yes, so I also circulated for the packet for you our estimate of the road projects that we were planning for two thousand twenty-two. I did bring these up. I don't know if anybody remembers randomly last year because of the nature of the projects. So on the list of what we're recommending for two thousand twenty-two is Edgewood, Fordham, and Howard. Those are streets that New Jersey American Water is going to be paving, repaving for us, because they just did water main work. And then our plan is to do some concrete repairs in advance of them paving this year. This is a project that New Jersey American Water decided to do late last year after we already funded the two thousand twenty-one road program and didn't have enough money to do these roads as well, because they, we weren't aware that New Jersey American Water was going to be doing the mains over there. So, um, we did talk about this last fall, because we, we pushed New Jersey American Water off of paving last fall so we could budget for this, these improvements this year and get out ahead of them to do things like apron repairs, the concrete aprons and the handicap ramps. I know there's some curbs that are deteriorated and should be replaced before we pay, before they pave. So it's a traditional treatment that we've been doing to all the roads in that area. And then the next one was Notre Dame Drive and Court. New Jersey American Water also replaced all the water mains throughout that drive and, and those two roads. And actually, a few years ago, PCG had a lot of, there was leaks, some gas leaks, that they had to go back in and cut in the road to, uh, to fix those leaks. So the road is in rough shape with all the temporary patches. And because New Jersey American Water did their mains, they're going to split some of the cost for resurfacing. We do, do need to do a full road reconstruct there, so our cost is a little bit higher than it would be if it was resurfacing. But because New Jersey is available to, you know, sit for some of the money to, to cut down our cost. Any condition on the road, we, we recommend that that gets done this year. And also Haynes Mill Road from Route one thirty to Conroe, that's the subject of two years worth of municipal aid grants totaling approximately three hundred eighty-five thousand. So we, you know, that needs to get done as well, because we do have timelines in which we have to spend the grant money for, you know, for the grants we get. So that, that's in total, less, with all the soft costs and less the grant money and the New Jersey American Water cost share, you're just under a million. And I also included in the packet, like samples or, or our previous road lists from last three to five years showing that, that's generally, you know, the amount of million, a little under a million is what you've been, you know, budgeting before. Last year was a little different because of the New Jersey American Water, PCNG, were also involved, and we didn't have to spend as much, because they were getting, we were beginning to want to paving through them. And, but, yeah, so that, those are the recommendations right now. I did put on the list what we're looking at at two thousand twenty-three and two, two thousand twenty-four, so you can see what's coming. Redstone Ridge, Pine Valley Drive, and Drew and Randall Court have been on the list for a while. They got pushed because of all the, because of PCNG, New Jersey American Water showed up, and we had to, you know, move to get all that done, because we got so much out of it. But that is something we're to be definitely targeting next year, unless, you know, I didn't think there would be more money for this year, but. So I don't know if anybody has any question?
Any questions from council? Yeah, I mean, I, before anyone jumps in, I, I think this is, I mean, some of this, we don't have an option, right? Because I think I like the way you laid it out, so I appreciate that. And some of this, we don't have an option for, right? With PCNG and all that. So, you know, we have to do the Edgewoods, the Fordhams, the Howards, and the Notre Dame, right? And then always excellent work on the, the grants associated with Haynes Mill, right? That's a heavily traveled road. We constantly apply to that municipal aid grant for those heavy traveled roads in town, and we seem to get them every year, which is fantastic for every other year.
Yeah, Conroe Road was, Conroe was a municipal grant. That's what we just finished. That was two years of grant that I think was like ninety-five percent covered by the grant.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I don't want to speak for all of councils, they can jump in, but I think this is, you know, right around the mark of how much we normally spend. I mean, sort of the struggle with this is that, and we have to rely on the mayor and Joe on this, but, I mean, we want to move, you know, we normally, we've been putting these before the budget process so that we can try to move as quickly as possible, kind of preempt the budget in a way and get these done in this fiscal year, rather than wait for the budget and do all the post-budget stuff. So, I mean, my, my main question is, can we ensure, whatever the process is, that we get this done within the, this year? Or do we have to, you know, without Jeff here, I know he was always on top of that process. So is that Joe, Jim, Gary question?
I, I think a lot is going to depend on how quickly the funding becomes available, Tyler. And i- if we can get these projects out to bid by late spring, early summer, there's a good chance that you could at least achieve substantial completion by winter shutdown. And when substantial completion usually means, you know, the road works done, the concrete works done, just that punch list items like we have from a few road projects from last year to follow up this coming spring. It, it's conceivable that it can be, it could be, reach that point there, Mr. President.
Great. And Jim, you can make, help us make sure we do that?
Yeah, you know, we get, we do everything we can to be ready. So once that, once the budget is adopted and the bond ordinance, assuming the bond ordinance is adopted, we're, we're often flying on the design and getting it ready out the bit.
Great. So, I mean, you know, we're trying to hit a moving target, but Joe and Gary, I mean, is this number palatable so far in what we're seeing with the budget debt service wise? Like, this isn't going to shatter us?
We okay? I mean, we don't have all the final numbers put together, and we're waiting for some things. The audit was just, you know, they just left the building a week or so ago. So we'll get some more numbers from them, but, you know, we, we're ready to pounce on this. And the issue is always, as you know, one of my biggest issues when I was on council was that, just the, the time it takes. So, you know, it, it seems like, oh, jeez, between now and September, but everything takes an inordinate amount of time. But we're prepared to move on it as quickly as we can.
Great. Okay.
Hey, hey, Jim, are you seeing in that particular industry, the contractors labor shortages or anything that would cause any kind of delays? Are they, they on top of it?
Um, no, no, no real labor shortages. These types of projects, it's more about certain materials. These projects really were not impacted by materials. Water pipe, water pipe has, was been on a delay. That's why that project across the street on Chester Ave, the Holy Cross development. That's why that was delayed a long time, because they couldn't get the, the duct line and water pipe delivered. But no, we're, we're, we're still good, and our enterprise is still reasonable. It's all about, if the oil goes up, it costs more.
All right. I guess that depends on some of the national affairs we're watching. So it's the same there. Hopefully that stays. Stays well, right, Jim? We can get kind of whacked with some bids that come in. But, yeah, I, I think this is solid. I think we're continuing to put the infrastructure first, especially if we have, you know, these roads on there, a million dollars worth of roads. If we do the river project capital, and I know there's some discussion, early discussions about some other capital projects, fields and things of that matter. You know, these are capital projects. They're expensive, but it has to get done. It's a part of doing business in town, and we need to make sure we keep our infrastructure, you know, moving forward and not aging rapidly like most of the country. So is there any other questions or comments from council?
I got this little bit. Hartford Road, which by Fairview, that's county now. Have you heard anything about them doing anything with that? An inquiry, like, it's, it's getting beat up pretty bad over there.
I, I noticed that council, but I'll, I'll, I'll make an inquiry this week, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, because I do travel that. You know, maybe not daily, but several times during the week, and that's kind of rough in there, and that needs some, some TLC through there.
Yeah. I heard from a resident that they saw somebody out there spray painting that area. That's really bad, Tom. So maybe they're teeing up to measure it and, you know, get involved. So Joe, if you could find that out, that would be, that would be fantastic.
Will do.
Thank you, Joe. Good question, Tom. Any other questions or thoughts from council? Okay, great. So Jim, I think we're good with that generally, conceptually wise, you know, barring any huge, you know, blowout in the budget or something. So, you know, we'll keep moving forward on our side budget wise, and then if you can just manage this, so the minute we get there, we can have all the ordinances teed up and get this out for bid right away.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Jim. You have anything else for us, Jim, or you're good?
Uh, no, unless anybody has any questions, council or public.
All right. Seeing that, we'll go to our reports. First up is interim township administrator, Lena. Joe, anything for us?
Simply, Mr. President, I was speaking with, with Brian Mull and our Public Works Director earlier today. The dates have been established for a spring cleanup, and it'll be Wednesday, April twentieth through Saturday, April twenty-third. We'll have the, the yard open from three to seven PM with all the dumpsters that we need. So we'll be advertising and getting the word out over the next few weeks. That is all.
Great, thank you. I know that's a popular event, so if we could get that online and to the masses, that'd be great.
Will do.
Thank you. Next up, we have a report from our clerk, Jamie Aggers. Jamie, thanks.
Thank you. Just one item. We received a request from Public Works and Police to sell some, you know, unused equipment. We're going to be selling it on, it's through a state contract on municipid. We used to do gov deals. Now municipid has the state contract. So I just wanted to give you the heads up that the resolution will be on for the public meeting, and if you have any questions, you can let me know.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. Next up, we have a report from Mayor. Mayor Captain.
Thank you, Council President. Just like to first say thank you to our interim solicitor, Eileen Fahy, who, who jumped in on literally a moment's notice earlier this afternoon to help us have this meeting tonight and hopefully get us through to, through the process to hire the next township solicitor. I also like to mention really good news that we received the bikeway grant and safe streets to transit. So what they mean, Delran Community Park Bike Path Improvement Grant, that's one point two plus million dollars. And that grant provides funds to counties and municipalities to promote bicycling as an alternative mode of transportation. It certainly promotes health and wellness throughout the area. And that will go, that actually was the largest bike path award, grant award in Burlington County. It may be more than that. I know for sure in Burlington County, and that's because that will connect a community park and Notre Dame Drive Park. That means that it must cross Swede's Run through the woods. And as Jim tells us often, whenever we're dealing with water, we have to be especially careful, and there's additional costs. So great news for us and the state, safe streets to transit. There'll be lots of intersections and other areas with the sidewalks that will be included. Not the least of which that is proposed is in, along Chester Avenue for all the many children that are walking home from school. That, that particular grant was five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And that'll allow, that'll be for Route one thirty and Chester Avenue pedestrian crossing and. pedestrian crossing and and safety improvements for the, that'll be for the design and installation of those sidewalks that I mentioned. And it's kind of a safety and access to mass transit riders walking to transit facilities. And again, those are grants that provide funding to counties and municipalities. And we were, we were very happy and very lucky to get over one point seven million dollars this year. So congratulations to us. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have a report from our interim solicitor, Eileen Fahy. Do you have anything for us?
Good evening, Mr. President. No, no report this evening.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us. Appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Next up, Jim, you're back again. Our engineer from CME Associates, Jim Winkowski. Jim?
Hi, nothing, nothing more to add. I do want to tag on to what the mayor said. Those two grants, the Bike Way and the Safe Streets for Transit are highly competitive. And the amount of money you got is spectacular and it is amazing how much. So that's all.
So Jim, you're you'll work on, I remember you said it's very unlikely that we will get the bike, the the park grant. I remember you saying that, but we did it anyway. So I'm glad we did. So your your office will plan that, you know, concept plan, like you guys got that taken care of?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's very early. We we just found out about the grant. So the next thing is we're going to get agreements sent to us in the mail. And then similar to the municipal aid, there'll be a timeline in which you have to spend the money. So I'll have to work with the mayor and the administrator on the budgets forum. And then, you know, the 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 scheduling. The sidewalk will definitely be a lot easier to get done than the Bike Way with the with the bridge crossing over the Swede's Run. But it's definitely not impossible and we have money for it. So it's going to be an exciting project.
Yep, great. Thanks, Jim. Looking forward to seeing that come to fruition. All right, next up, we have reports from members of council. We'll start off with Councilwoman Virginia Breho. Councilwoman?
Yes, really quick, I want to welcome Eileen. And also, I want to thank Jim for all the work he did to get us to where we are with the Army Corps of Engineers. And also thank you to everybody who contributed to that prior to myself coming on board. That's all I have. Thank you.
Next up, we have Councilman Marlo Smith. Councilman?
Yes, I'd just also like to welcome Solicitor Fahy to see. Thanks again for being flexible and being able to step in so we can have our meeting this evening. Also, just looking forward to, you know, having these meetings again in person next month. So that's my end of my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have a report from Councilman Lynn Jenny. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. Just update on we value our veterans. I spoke with Sean Haren. He's the Vice Commander at Post three thirty twenty. And they're going to be working on developing ideas on who would be a good veteran to be honored. We do anticipate having a selection for our March public meeting, so I'm looking forward to that. Also, on March third, I'll be attending a roundtable discussion sponsored by Governor Murf- Murphy. Thanks to Carol Murphy's email on that. I was also honored to attend with our council president Eagle Scout Court of Honor. Saturday before last for Alex Lane, a Delray resident, an awesome achievement in Troop Twenty Seven. He, it was really a very interesting, unique ceremony, and I enjoyed being there. I do have comments regarding submissions we've been facing. So if you bear with me a moment. Good evening, Mayor, fellow members of council and residents of Delray. I have elected to speak out tonight regarding issues that have been confronting our town government for a number of months. Why now? After the comments made by council members last meeting, I felt this time was appropriate. I, along with members of council, prefer to allow the mayor the opportunity to respond and clarify the issues being raised. I'm very dissatisfied with the way the issues have been handled. It would have been much clearer if many of the responses now being presented by the mayor had been done so in a more timely manner. Some of what we now know about the issues were not known when the first inquiries were made. Nonetheless, clear succinct responses would have been better than no response. I prefer to be clear in my comments tonight. Many words have been spoken and written regarding our township celebration for the retirement of a Delray native who can arguably be considered one of the greatest female soccer players of all time. It seems the more these words are repeated, the issues become more confusing. Create a narrative that is based on innuendo, allegations, and rhetoric based on false premises. Mayor Catrboon addressed the issues on unethical behavior and or criminal actions. He then took the initiative to reach out to the state New Jersey to determine whether or not the narrative that has been created holds water. It was clearly stated in response to Mayor Catrboon's request by a state official that there are no violations of the state's ethics or criminal laws. Continued attempts were made to contradict the state's conclusion. The attempts merely muddy the waters, as has been done so many times. Looking at the facts, there was no violation. Again, could the issues have been handled a better way? I must say yes. The fact remains that through all of the rhetoric, misinformation, muddying of waters, and outright false information presented at township meetings, there has been no violation, as has been stated numerous times by the mayor and the township attorney. We are laypeople. We rely on our professionals for advice. They are experts in the laws and ordinances we adhere to. Again, members of council were reluctant to speak sooner in order to allow the mayor to resolve the issues. We are now at a point where we must move forward. It is time to end the constant false and misleading narrative. I especially find it disturbing that council members and the mayor must be escorted by police when leaving in-person public meetings due to the aggressive, threatening and insulting actions by some individuals. This narrative was created to benefit an individual's blog, gain more exposure, and possibly obtain money from the township. These are not made up, but spoken clearly at a public meeting on October twenty sixth, twenty twenty one, as the end goal of the attacks on our township. It was made clear that the goal was to locate another township, apparently number eight, according to the public comments made by the accuser, that may present opportunities for similar treatment. It was also stated that seven thousand dollars was awarded when a lawsuit was settled after another municipality was subjected to similar scrutiny. These parasitic actions damaged the system set up to address real violations of state and local laws. Lastly, I will address another issue raised regarding the council vote on a settlement that was agreed upon by both parties to remedy a suit filed by Dumping Landscaping. Without confusing the issue with the long story, the question is, should Councilman Smith and myself have recused ourselves from voting on a settlement that would be best for the township or enter into a process to defend the township and spend more taxpayer money? As was stated by Councilman Smith at our last meeting and echoed by me, the question was asked whether a recusal was necessary. The answer from our professional and our attorney was no. Therefore, I reject the comments made to the contrary. We voted honestly and with integrity. In conclusion, I value my integrity and reputation in this community. After serving sixteen years on the Board of Edges, six years as president, over four years on the Delray zoning board of adjustment, two as a chairperson, and now going on my second year as Councilman at large. I am proud and honored to have served with integrity and with the best interests of Delray and always been a priority. Delray has been my home for over forty-three years. I reject insinuations, allegations, and disparaging comments made at meetings on social media that are inaccurate, contain false and malicious information, and attempt to damage my reputation. Based on the previous facts and after slogging through the false comments and conclusions, I require, I request an apology from those who continue to generate false and inaccurate information. I pledge to continue to serve our community with integrity and pride. Those are the end of my comments. Thank you, President, Council President.
Thank you, Lynn. Next up, we have a report from our Vice President of Council, Mr. Tom Lyon.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilman Jenny. Like to just comment on the Army Corps project that Jim was talking about down in Virginia's Ward. I think we need to do whatever we can to get that project moving, fund it, and and get a long-term solution down there. Hopefully, we we could be part of that or make sure future councils go through with it, since it is a very long project. Secondly, welcome, Ms. Fahy. Again, it's great to see you. She is a very, very competent, smart individual, and we're happy to have her. And we appreciate you coming in on short notice. Next, I had the pleasure of being able to be a part of the Delray Tab Township Visioning Meeting. And what was really cool about it is we had so many people chime in. And there was definitely a theme of looking forward for Delray and and how do we create sustainability and green initiatives? And more sidewalks for people to to walk. And then we got the bike grant for biking. And looking forward to what can we do with possibly helping with the E V situation with charging in in new projects that are coming in, whether they're private, public, or a combination of both. But I really, there were some great, great ideas that were put forth by the body at large. And great job on the grants. There, some of them are really hard and competitive to get, so hats off to everybody that was involved with getting those grants. That's my report. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Vice President. Appreciate it. For my report, just want to echo the comments made by my colleagues. First, I want to be remiss if I didn't take a moment and acknowledge that Sal Siciliano is no longer with us, although we, me and him did not see eye to eye. I do want to thank him for his service at the township many years before he served as a solicitor. And I really thank him for moving on peacefully and preventing, moving on peacefully. I'll leave it at that. But I also want to mention a couple of things. Tom, Tom talked about Vice President. I I do have to say, I did meet with a couple of residents this week and I did talk about how CME Jim does a fantastic job at making sure we get grants, right? And grants are, we always say free money for the township, right? We have to pay a little bit for Jim to do that and to organize some of them. But we have, you know, Jim, I'm sure you can give me the number next meeting, but millions of dollars worth of grants in a few years. And that is huge for the residents because if it didn't come from the state, it would have to come from our coffers, right? And then that means we can't do certain things. So Jim, I just want to thank you for staying on top of that. You know, some of these very tough applicants and sometimes we're just, you know, you're just applying and praying and sometimes it works out. So I I thank you very much for doing that for the residents. And the last and final thing, as I'm sure there's a lot of members from the river and near the river who are joining us tonight. And I agree with the comments made by Virginia and Tom about, you know, working to get a solution for for the river. And I, without putting the cart before the horse, I believe, you know, council will fund this project. And, you know, especially the this concept plan and hopefully keep moving in the right direction. We can get a long-term solution for the river. So with that, that'll conclude my comments and we'll now open the floor to public comments. So I'll ask for a motion.
Motion, Tom Lyon.
Tom, can you second for me?
Second, please, Tom Lyon.
Thank you. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Our floor is now open to public comment. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom and you will be recognized and put into our participant room here. Just state your name and address for the record. And the individual speaker has five minutes of time, which he or she can do with what she pleases. And all statements are part of the public record tonight, which is both written, video and audio recorded and cannot be redacted or retracted after the fact. So with that, if you could please raise your hand, you'll be recognized and we'll go through public comment. Jamie, first up is Ms. Littleton.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. How are you?
Not too bad. And you?
Good, good. The floor is yours.
So I want to thank whoever worked on those applications or the grants. I I think those are good things for the township and and everyone who had a hand in that. I really applaud your efforts. So that being said, I would like to welcome Ms. Fahy as well as everyone else. So I'm going to start off my comments a little frustrated. Council continues to be irritated by questions and of prior concerns, meeting after meeting after meeting, and continues to accuse the residents of increasing cost to the township because of the significant number of Oprah requests. Yet limits our question time to five minutes per person will not let anyone yield to another speaker, even though the meeting decorum rules do not prohibit this and Roberts Rules of Order expressly allow it, and continues to say, trust us, everything is legal and ethical here, but do not provide evidence to support these assertions. I utilize the Oprah request to validate your responses as I do not have trust in some of the actions that are happening with the council and mayor. Typically, a review of the Oprah information sometimes invalidates responses made by you, sometimes brings to light new information that you have not shared with us in prior meetings, causing us to rehash previously discussed actions over and over again. I will say that sometimes it validates exactly what you said. So I I'm looking at this with open eyes and I am not making assertions. So a lot of my comments tonight are going to be based upon facts. I've said this before and I'll say it again, I don't believe any of you at some point or another understands the word transparency or what it means to be transparent. My personal opinion, you can disagree. Mayor, I I want to put you on the hot spot for a little bit. So Mr. Jenny said that you received a response from the exits committee or the state's ethics committee. Did you receive a response for your investigation that you requested?
Mr. Duff received the response prior to to me receiving a response.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that. So you have not received one for you.
No, maybe Councilman Jenny misunderstood.
And and I totally understand that. I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Correct.
So I I'm going to talk a little bit about the comments that you made during the two one twenty twenty-two public meeting. You say there's, and and Mr. Jenny just reiterated that there's been a manipulation of facts, that there's insinuations and innuendos and and all that that's happening. And you say this, you allege that, and then later you misrepresent the facts yourself. The Oprah response that the Department of Community Affairs set up, provided to Mr. Duff, said I didn't identified there were no violations of law and ethics on his first request. But there was a subsequent part that you did not read into the statement. So you misrepresented the facts yourself. In that second response, Mr. Duff provided more explanation into what happened. And instead, the Ethics Committee did not say that this did not rise to the level of no violations and no ethics issues. They pointed Mr. Duff to the 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 source documents where he could find the answer himself. So a little bit of misrepresentation of facts on your part, a little not transparent there. As well, you started with questioning, or you said this all started with the questioning of fireworks expense. But that's not the case. Mr. Duff asked for the expenses for the Carly event, not specifically fireworks. What happened is one of the people who read his blog said, no, I I donated money for the fireworks, so that can't be right. So he asked again and got some information that was not the same as the first information that the township provided. So he asked a third time to get it all. And this time he asked for all in and out money. And that's when we came to the ninety thousand. I mean, the the price just kept going up and up and up. So here again, you misrepresented the facts. So please don't talk about Mr. Duff misrepresenting the the facts when you do it yourself. You requested to the state investigate. You requested to the state investigate.
Excuse me. If you could just wrap up your comments, please, and then we'll.
I'm already at five minutes?
You're at 5:30.
Okay. So there was the investigation. We can't find proof of investigation because you did that personally instead of out there on the state's website where we could see that. We talked about the legal cost of $20,000 for the Oprah request, but here again, we're having problems providing oversight and we can't see what you're doing. You say you did not trespass, that you took those pictures on Dunphy's property. I went out there and I walked it and I can prove you wrong.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Just, just in reference to Jamie, you can remove from the floor. Just, just in reference to, I understand there's a concern. I thought it was addressed previously, but there's concern about the numbers have changed through various Oprahs and the reason for such was that it takes time for the billing process to happen. Invoices come in. They have to get submitted to the township. There's a lengthy, lengthy process that happens. PO process. So the minute the events, you know, at the end of the event, that particular event, right? All the costs have not been spent, hasn't gone through all the purchasing process. So when the initial Oprah request came in, the, all the numbers weren't there and that's why there was unfortunately a slow drip of information. I do regret that that's the way that it happened. Don't get me wrong, but there was no malicious intent with that by any means. It was just sort of the nature of the billing process. But with that, I see Mr. Egan had his hand up. Did he put his hand down? Yes, he did. If you put your hand down, Mr. Egan, so if you want to speak, please just raise your hand. If there's anyone else who wants to speak? All right, last call. I'll ask for a motion to close the floor. Oh, Mr. Egan. Go ahead.
Hey, I'm sorry.
No problem. I just didn't know if you wanted to back off.
Yeah, no. Mr. Jenny mentioned something about the about the, the police escorting members after the meetings, you know, to their vehicles in his little statement. But is there like a reason why the, the police are present during the, the meetings? Is there, is there actually been a threat made for the police to be involved in the township meetings that we've had in person?
Mr. Egan, I'm not, I'm not privy to that information. You'd have to ask the police department or the administrative wing, wing of our township. I'm that's not, I wouldn't be privy to that.
Mr. Council President?
Go ahead.
Mr. Egan, you know, the reason that started, part of it was because of the fact that when Mr. Lyon and I were exiting the building, we were aggressively approached by Mr. Duff's posse in my face, about two inches from my face, screaming at me. Mr. Lyon and I took the high road and walked away. The posse followed us out and finally, you know, Mr. Duff had to draw him back. So yeah, that's why. And I suggested to the chief that we did not need it. He said, please, we don't want to see anything happen in our jurisdiction.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know about that incident. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if you've known, but some of the people that voice their opinions during these meetings, one in particular had tires, all four of her tires slashed. And someone was threatened to be shot in the face. So I don't know if you've, you've heard of that. Uh, next, next thing I want to mention was, when, when did Wendy Mitchell obtain her insurance for her communications director's position? Does anybody know?
That'd be a question for the administration, Joe or Gary.
I don't have it in front of me. I could certainly get it and pass it along to Mr. Egan.
All right. Well, it was 1/17 of 2022.
So you know, okay.
Yes. Well, I was trying to see if you knew. So she won a year as a communications director without insurance. Is, is anybody have anything to say about that or was anybody supposed to check up on her to make sure that she did have insurance? How, how did something like this happen? Does anybody have an answer?
I can certainly say that it's my understanding that she was never asked to provide a certificate of insurance. And that was certainly something that, you know, we have, we I don't, I don't know if it was anybody's fault. I don't, we know that we didn't, it wasn't requested. Our previous administrator certainly was up on all the laws and whether we needed it or not, and it was just never requested. I don't know whether, I don't know. But when it was requested, she provided it.
A year later, I guess.
No, it was, it was, I believe it was the same day that it was requested. She provided information and then insurance.
Yeah. I beg to differ on that. That, that's, that's not true. Is it, is that normal? What, why are you chuckling for? It's, it's not true. She won a year without insurance. It's a fact.
She was not extra insurance until, I believe, the day she provided it.
So is there any oversight for any contractors that work for the township? Anybody supposed to be checking up on these quote unquote contractors that work for the township? Is that somebody's job? Is that Mr. Bolina's job?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. And I understand you, you just got this position, you know, after Mr. Hatch or so, something happened in meantime. Tyler, how much time do I have?
You have about 30 seconds.
30 seconds. All right. I'll make this quick. Mr. Duff requested the video for the Carly Lloyd event. And there was a, an issue with the, the minors. You know, the, the children, that their faces had to be covered, redacted their faces.
Yeah.
Now, if that's the case, does, is Wendy Mitchell, should she be showing the, the minors' faces on her Facebook page? Facebook 2.0, Delran 2.0? She's shown the pictures of the minors during a party and their faces are not blocked. So how is it that she can show their faces, but Mr. Duff cannot get a video of the event that he's asked for?
Tyler, you want me to answer that or?
You can answer that. That's going to expire our time. Go ahead.
Okay. So I would say that that's not a governmental website. None of the residence pages are based from in the government. None of the official page, the only official page is Delran Township Municipal Facebook page. And that's where, you know, when it's government, my understanding is that if it's government property, that we have a a certain level of criteria for releasing that. I don't know that.
That she works for the township as a contractor.
But Delran Residence 2.0 is not something that is under her governmental purview. What she does in her own time is her own time.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Egan. Appreciate it. Next up, we have Mr. Duff. Patrick Duff. Pat, can you hear us? I don't think, hey, Pat, can you hear us? If you're talking, we cannot hear you. Mr. Duff, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. I'm going through a little bad cell zone here.
It's all right. I just want to make sure we can hear you for assurance.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Let me first respond to some of the last week's comments. Mr. Lyon called me a carpetbagger and said, I'm coming to, I guess, make money off towns through these Oprah lawsuits. I've never made a dollar off any Oprah lawsuit that I've filed against any township. To get to the second part where Lynn Jenny has said, I have stated.
Pat, we, we lost you. So if you're driving, I maybe not drive and pull over and then have, we can have a conversation.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now, Pat. Can you hear us?
Hold on one second. I'm getting out of the car. I'm going to go near my, my, my residence where I have better. Can you hold my time, please?
Sure. I, I'm definitely better that you not drive than have a conversation. So.
I'm not driving. Same as driving.
Okay, good.
Can you hear me now better?
Yes. Yes. It's like a Verizon commercial. Go ahead.
A bad, a really bad Verizon commercial. Because, because it's almost like a, it's almost like an old pulp fiction ad, because you have such, such a miss, miss, some, some, some fallacies being presented.
All right. We're starting your time. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead. Yep.
All right. So here's where I'm at on this whole, whole issue here, Delran. First of all, Lynn Jenny came out and said that I was making misrepresentations and presenting facts that were, were false. Well, all the facts that I presented were, were given from the Oprah request I received from the township. So which facts, Mr. Jenny, have I produced that are false? You were on the zoning board that voted against the Dunphy variance, correct? Weren't you?
Yes, I was.
Okay. And you were the only one to speak against the zoning variance. Am I correct?
That's a choice of the members, Mr. Duff.
Mr. Duff, this is not, this is not a cross-examination of Lynn, so if you can keep.
Okay, let me answer one of his questions. Mr. Duff, you asked me about the information. The fact was on October 26th, you said that you earned $7,000 from suing another township.
I didn't say that. Show that fact, brother.
You said that, sir.
No, I didn't.
You said that's what I do.
$7,000 for all the work I put in? Yeah. I guarantee you the township would pay me that. Let me ask you guys a question. Why did your solicitor resign? Where's the memo? The solicitor was supposed to produce. Does anybody have a copy of that memo? Because the only thing I have a copy of is a resignation letter. Mayor, you promised the mayor that the solicitor would not resign and he would produce a memo. Do you have a copy of the memo, mayor? Or are you ready to explain your positions on those, those things that you said the solicitor would, would explain?
So what I said was I was not going to ask the solicitor to resign and I did not. He resigned on his own volition.
No, you said you were going to direct him to write a memo to explain his positions on bid splitting, correct? And on, and on the other issues such as you, you trespassing on the Dunphy property, correct?
Which is incorrect. By the way, the pictures that were submitted that were taken on the street in front of the Dunphy property were submitted to the, the judge.
Correct.
Surely if I was going to do something illegally to produce pictures of something, I would not have trespassed in order to do that. So you know, unfortunately.
So can I ask the mayor, mayor, can I ask you, because I didn't.
I was trying to answer the first question.
Well, no, because I had, I have limited time. At the.
I'll wait.
Did you, did you offer to buy Dunphy's property after the zoning board refused his variance? Did you offer to buy the Dunphy property in 2020 after the zoning board refused the variance?
We were talking with the owner of the property before Dunphy's bought that.
I'm asking a different question. Did you ask, did, did the solicitor send an offer to Dunphy to buy the property? There was a meeting in September of 2020 where the township discussed acquiring a property. That property was 4101 Bridgeboro Road. Dunphy still owned it. The variance was just refused. My question is, did you make an offer to the Dunphy's to try to buy their property after Lynn Jenny and Marlo Smith were part of the, the zoning board that denied their variance?
Mayor, hold on. Mr. Duff, you have about 35 seconds. So I, my recommendation for you is to ask the rest of your questions and then we can answer them afterwards. I'm trying to help you out here and make the most of your time.
Great. So, so I'll finish by saying, I, I don't bluff. I filed a lawsuit against the township. It was just filed today. You could look it up. Duff versus Delran. It's got a great ring to it about the Carly Lloyd video. So the township has been served right now verbally and you will be served physically by, by my attorney for not releasing that video, which is just silly. I need an answer as to why the solicitor resigned. There were supposed to be some answers as to bid splitting, as to the insurance. Listen, I can prove that township was contacted prior to telling the insurance company they were contacted on the insurance for Dunphy, and that is insurance fraud. The township committed insurance fraud. We're talking about a major crime that was done. I am not saying that it's a maybe. I'm saying that from the statements from the insurance advisor and from the statements from the township and from the evidence I can show from emails that the township was involved in discussions and settlement negotiations with the Dunphy attorneys prior to when they ever told the insurance company that they were involved in these.
All right, Mr. Duff.
So I, so please answer my question.
Final thought.
Mayor, 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 I got to be honest. You are the, and, and Mr. Jenny saying like he didn't do anything wrong. Why did, why did solicitor resign? If, if nothing was done wrong, where's this memo? Let's, let's answer the questions. Bid splitting, the insurance investigation. Why wasn't it filed on time? Answer all these questions, please. That, that was promised, promised to the citizens by the mayor. Wasn't it promised in your, in your video, mayor?
Thank.
Let's, let's hear your response, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duff, for your time and questions. We can address those, Jamie. The, the questions regarding, Mary, you're going to have to pick up the ball on those questions respectfully, but I, I will. There was one question about Duff and you mentioned a meeting, a closed session meeting. I did have a few residents reach out to me regarding that. They have some Oprah requests related to that. So they're obviously aware of the nature of that. And, you know, Duff asked if if we reached out to Dunphy's to buy the property. I think it's been well established that was a property that a council considered buying early on, the township considered buying, buying early on. We could not do that for various reasons. At the time, after the zoning board appeal, or after the zoning hearing, there was an appeal, the prerogative writ. And at that point, council did meet and we did have a discussion and, and I believe ours, at the time, reached out to them and said, hey, what are, what are you guys up to? What are you guys looking at? You know, the council always, the township always has an interest in the property, always did. You know, would you be interested in selling? Are you guys continuing on? What's going on? So we reached out just to kind of feel them out. But the rest of that is, is, is obviously closed session and we can't get into that. But I do know there's some emails associated with it. So I'm sure the questions would come. But you know, I got to say that that's not uncommon for townships to do that. In fact, there's another property that went through a zoning process, got relief they actually wanted and now want to sell it back to the township for various reasons. So it happens all the time. They get denied their relief or they get the relief they want. And sometimes the business proposition just falls apart. And then they come to the township because we have access to open space money, things like that. Grants, as Jim has identified for us plenty of times, right, that we can purchase these properties. So it's not infrequent and not uncommon for that to happen at all. So just address that.
Well, thank you, Tyler, for, for that. I mean, that answered his question with all the details. Obviously, I don't keep everything we've ever done over the last 13 years at my fingertips. So I appreciate you filling in the details for that. And frankly, you know, I, I will either with the interim solicitor or with the permanent solicitor, replacement solicitor, when that happens, still get that information. But I, I was not aware until it happened that Mr. Siciliano was going to resign. So I did not receive the response from him on that. And we'll continue to find that answer and then we'll release it and let everybody know. There's no problem with that.
All right. Thank you. Two other hands, Lou, I see, Jamie. Lou, we don't have a last name, but Lou, can you hear us?
Do, have we suspended name and address for the record permanently or?
We should be doing that. Luke, can you hear us? I believe you're muted. So Lou, last call, Lou. Jamie, you don't see anything, right? Or hear anything different?
No, I can.
Lou, you didn't. Lou, you didn't mute, right? You permitted talking, thank.
Yes, I'll I'll see if I can ask to unmute. I don't know if that will work.
All right, Lou, we're going to take you off the floor. Um, if you can get it to work, we'll go back to you, but uh always we can talk to you after the meeting. You can call members of council or uh reach out to Jamie and we can schedule a call. Uh, I want to make sure your your issues are addressed. Um, but next is is last name Stretch. I don't want to butcher the the first name, but uh last name Stretch, correct? Can you hear us? Another person who's muted, right, Jamie?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? We got you, yes.
All right, beautiful. Hey, this is Scott Duco. That's my uh, my business, my business Zoom, so when I logged in through the app.
Okay.
You got my.
You just state your name and address for the for the record. I'm sorry, I've.
Uh, my name's Scott Duco. I I I, like many of the people, I don't wish to uh state my address. Um, so last week, the council had um called for the uh the solicitor's resignation as well as the indirectly asking for the mayor's uh resignation. Is that still the uh, the council president's uh position?
This is Scott, right?
Yes.
Yes, Scott, my my comments speak for themselves. Um, I'm not going to keep relitigating my past comments. Um, I'm I'm glad the Sal did the right thing for the township and we can move on uh and make steps forward.
And now, um, the the uh the comments from Wendy Mitchell last week about uh the police and her not being able to uh attend Winter Fest because of her, her son and her were threatened, I believe was the term that she used. Uh, there was some kind of threat that she couldn't attend Winter Fest, but isn't it indeed true that she was at Winter Fest? Uh. And there was, there was no threat, there was no call to the police, there was no communication to the police or the or the or the council of a of a threat to Wendy Mitchell. Um, so so that that seems like a blatant uh lie on record. Do what you, can you, can you speak on that?
And if the mayor wants to speak on that, I'm not going to speak on, I mean, I I I don't speak for Wendy Mitchell. I I she has to answer that herself. Um, I.
I mean, that's, I'm, I think that should be answered because she got up on a soapbox last week and just stated, you know, some some pretty inaccurate things. So we're talking about muddying the record, you know, those were some of the the words that have been used in the past that it was there a threat? What 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 was there a a credible threat? I don't believe there was. Uh, I guess that truth will come out. So uh, I'm I'm okay with hearing the the mayor speak on that. I I'd like to um to just touch on the um the Tom Lyon comments from last week uh as well. Um, I'm no one's lackey. I know uh Mr. Lyons was speaking about me. I've known Patrick for close to thirty years. I've I've worked with Patrick on many community uh uh, you know, projects, very similar to this one, you know, where we're, we just want to get to the truth. We just want to get get the best for the citizens of of any anywhere. It doesn't really matter. Um, there was no threatening, walking out of the uh out of the the township, you know, the town hall. If anyone was doing threatening things, it was Mr. Jenny and Mr. Lion. And that's what, that's what initiated a response from me. I, you know.
Sure, you're a liar, sir.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess there's other liars here. Then, yeah, then show, show the video from the front of council. I mean.
Prove what we said.
Yeah, okay, well, I, you know, this is, I, it's funny, you guys are calling people liars because you've been up there lying for months about all this stuff that's going on. And and it's, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. The solicitor has resigned. And I think it's correct that the council president called for the mayor's resignation, and the mayor is an embarrassment to the town. And he should resign. And if he doesn't resign, this isn't a threat for me. There there is an active investigation with the Burlington County Prosecutor's Office. So, you know, maybe it's best to to resign. You know, go out by yourself or go out and cuss, Mr. Catrimbone. You guys have a good night. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Is there any other uh public comment? Please raise your hand. And Lou, we had, right? Um, I don't see Lou anymore, right, Jamie? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to close the floor.
Motion to come out of public.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second Marla Smith.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's opposed, motion carries, we are now closed. And we do not need an executive session, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Tom Lyon. Second, Lynn Jenny.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. We will see you in a couple weeks. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.